All right. Good evening. Welcome to the September 10th meeting of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting to order.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We get to start out with one of my most favorite groups of ladies. Whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 7th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Jared Giddens, Mayor for the City of Nixa, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week, and I urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that honor holds. And I didn't know if any of you wanted to get up and speak.
Yes.
This is the Daughters of the American Revolution? Yep.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Isaac Garrison Chapter NSDAR, we would like to present to you the 2024 poster for Constitution Week. In addition, this year, we would also like to present to you the United States flag that has flown over the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution headquarters, along with a certificate in honor of the veterans of Christian County.
You guys always give me such great things to hang up in the office. Now we gotta get our annual picture, though.
Thank you. Yes, could we get the entire bird?
Yeah, oh yes, for sure. Always love when we get cool stuff that we can hang up at City Hall. And they always bring the best. Okay. Next up, we will open up the visitor's section. If you would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, do so at this time. Do I have anyone signed up? Fair enough, we will close the visitor's section. Moving on to first reading, Council Bill 2024-28.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2024-28. In ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa annexing approximately 29.6 acres of the real property generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Nicholas Road and Mount Vernon Street, zoning said property to the General Commercial GC Zoning District and amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 1, Section 2-27 of the Nixa City Code. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Great time for a technical malfunction. We are discussing the annexation of approximately 29 acres at West Mount Vernon and Nicholas Road. They are proposing all three tracts that are at this location to be zoned general commercial. Yes. Okay. Sorry. Yeah, okay, so that is how it is currently laid out. You can see the three properties. It's the property adjacent to the northeast corner of Nicholas and Mount Vernon. And then also there is 19 acres that is adjacent to Leanne, which is on the right side of that map. Last month, the property owner did split off approximately five acres at the north end of the property via administrative minor subdivision through the county. So those are the three properties in question for annexation, and they are proposing general commercial zoning. When we were discussing this with the property owner, we've been discussing it with the property owner for a few months now, we were under our old comprehensive plan, our previous comprehensive plan. So every, the recommendation for general commercial is in line with the previous comprehensive plan, as the next slide would show. It does show red for commercial activity in this area. Even if we do go to our new comprehensive plan, it shows mixed-use development on this site. Since we do not currently have a standard mixed-use zoning district, general commercial would be what staff would recommend as the highest and best use for the zoning. In order to get a mixed-use zoning classification, we still have the planning and development mixed-use district, but that involves having an actual development plan and would be approved by the City Council. The property owner does not have a development plan that's fully developed and ready to present to staff's knowledge. So right now, the best use would be to just zone it as general commercial. With this property, there is utilities currently on site. There is sewer stubbed out in the northeast corner along Leanne. There is electric to, along the south property line. There is also water along the south property line, I believe. Go to the next one. Go to the next picture right above that. Yep, that one. See, there's also water going up Nicholas Road as well. The sewer is being evaluated to see exactly how much additional flow can go to the northeast. The manhole, you can see the green manhole in the corner of the picture there. That sewer that's going that way is being evaluated for whatever the potential development may be. Whatever does not flow that way will flow to the southwest, which, as we know, will flow to the Elkmont Lift Station. That will obviously require a wait until that new lift station is online. But if they can get everything to flow to the northeast, whenever they have a development plan, they can proceed with it. I don't believe there's much else to report on this. It is compact and contiguous to current city limits. Electric service will be provided by the City of Nixa. The property owner had the current electric provider remove service from the property, so that way the City of Nixa can provide service in the future. They had to wait like 90 days after doing that before they can technically annexed. I believe that 90 days is next week. So by the time second read comes around, that 90 days will have passed, and electric can be provided by the City of Nixa. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, a few of the neighbors came and spoke to the commission. They weren't against development. They were just making sure that the Planning and Zoning Commission and elected officials and staff kept the interests of the single-family residents in mind over there, just to make sure that we thought about them with whatever was being proposed, to make sure that it wouldn't be too intrusive on them. With all things considered, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, unanimously recommend approval to City Council. Staff does recommend approval of the annexation and the recommended zoning of general commercial. In addition, this property will be added to District 2, Council District 2. So if you have any questions, I am available.
Any questions?
Remind me, is that little house in the corner there, is that already gone, or is that?
It's scheduled to be demolished. I believe it's still there.
Okay.
And there's also a structure left on the nine acres adjacent to the intersection of Nicholas and 14 as well that's still there. But those are all scheduled to disappear at some point.
Any other questions?
I'm sure I missed something. I'll get it next time.
Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this matter, do so at this time.
Good evening, Council members and mayor. My name is Mike Miller, and I live at 201 North Bondaway. Before starting, I want to say thank you, Sean, for responding to some requests I had for the city website. Appreciate your quick action.
Absolutely.
Also want to say commendations to Police Chief for hosting the Nixa Citizens Academy Police Group. I was part of that last season, and it's an outstanding program. We appreciate you putting that on again and learned a whole lot. It gives me a different perspective on the news stories you see about police officers these days, so it's a great asset to our community. I have a handout that maybe could be passed to the members. I do have some concerns about the timing and disclosures of this request. On September 3rd, just last week, the Nixa Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approving this annexation and general zoning request, which you just heard about. On that date, no development plans were revealed to the commission or known by the city staff or the zoning request applicant, which is Toth and Associates. We spoke to them after the meeting. Yet, three days later, on September 6th, the Springfield Business Journal ran a story about Extreme Exteriors holding a September 11th, which is tomorrow, groundbreaking ceremony for their new corporate headquarters, being built on this property. On September 9th, the Nixa Chamber of Commerce had a Facebook post inviting the public to that groundbreaking ceremony. And then today, I heard a radio promotion about the groundbreaking as well. So I just wonder why this event is being promoted when annexation and rezoning has not been passed by City Council. It seems like Extreme Exteriors is jumping the gun on this and perhaps not being forthright and truthful about their plans. I admit that this first step in land development may only be a formality, but if a developer has withheld information in this process and then assumes passage of a request before a vote, careful scrutiny and deeper questions probably need to be asked as the next steps for zoning take place. As mentioned by the past speaker, future development of this land will certainly impact the home values on Leanne Drive, Avalon Drive, Bondaway, and neighboring streets, as well as the traffic flow on Mount Vernon Street. We need your help and a promise that you look over our interest as we move forward on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I will leave the public hearing open if anyone else would like to speak on this one.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Sean Berry, 1550 East Republic Road, Springfield, Missouri. I work with Toth and Associates. We're here representing the applicant. Just wanted to make sure that you all knew that we were here, and that if you had questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them to address the concern there. I think that plans for Hunter Lampy, if you guys are familiar with him, he owns Extreme Exteriors. I don't think he's hidden those plans from anybody. His intent is to develop a small portion of this property for his headquarters, for his business. It'd be off Mountain Vernon Road, just north of the 14th Highway. So groundbreaking is probably more ceremonial than actual physically groundbreaking. He hasn't submitted plans at this time. None of that's gone through the City Council for approval. The intent is to do that, and it is under design, but it's not at the point where they're ready to really physically start erecting a building. So just want to make sure that was clarified. If you all have any questions for me, I'd be happy to address those. If not, we're here in the background if you need us.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. No one else would like to speak? I will close the public hearing. And Mr. Miller, I do, I could see how that timeline might seem a little crazy, but I can tell you that we have been working with Mr. Lampy for quite some time. And a lot of it had to do with our sewer capacity in that area, and, which is part of the other reason the whole thing isn't being planned to be developed. His first thought was to move his headquarters over to that area closer to the corner. And so, you know, in working with him and his engineers and architects, and we found a way that that would be okay, because it wouldn't really tap out the sewer over there. So this has been, and I actually think Mr. Gaby said a couple months, I'm pretty sure this started before we even started the comprehensive plan. This has been going on for a really long time. So he has been working well with us, and he's been upfront about everything. And so when those plans do, you know, come out, that's something that would be, would come back to, I think, P&amp;Z and Council, or just P&amp;Z at some point. Or they'll announce it, or it'll be out there. But I know that they are, you know, they have some plans for that area, but it's not really set in stone. We haven't received any applications on it or anything yet. So, and he is right. The groundbreaking is usually you dig a shovel in the ground, and then it's months and months before anything actually starts to happen. So, but you can always call up here, reach out to one of us if you have any questions during any of that process, so. Okay. Was there anything else from the? We've?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Go for it.
The comprehensive plan, what goes into that consideration for a comprehensive plan?
So we just finished our process of the comprehensive plan, and that was months and months of community members, city staff, other city leaders from the school, every different organization from local businesses. So different groups kind of putting together their ideas on what they want to see for the future 10, 15, 20 years of Nixa, and where they want the growth to be, and what kind of growth they want in those certain areas. So I think the final document is 370-something pages long, and it outlines every part of the city and future growth that's not even annexed into the city yet. So it was a lot of brainstorming sessions, a lot of input from the community. Really, honestly, the elected officials and city staff tried to stay out of the part where the community provided their input. And then it was all put together. It was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and approved by them. And at the last City Council meeting, it was supported by the City Council, and it's now been adopted.
And to elaborate on that, too, this particular parcel of land, since it was county, although in the comprehensive plan, it's looking to be scheduled as mixed-use. And currently, we don't have a definition of what we're going to define for mixed-use since we just adopted that new comprehensive plan. So general commercial currently, since this was started, the process started before the comprehensive plan was adopted, they chose to go with general commercial on this for the time being.
Okay. With that, is there any other discussion from Council? All right. If not, we will move on. Next up is Council Bill 2024-29.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2024-29. In ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, amending Chapter 101, Article 2, Division 2, Section 101-72 of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission flexibility in scheduling regular meetings. Presenting is City Planner Brendan Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So in July, Council discussed allowing for some flexibility in the dates and times of these meetings. That discussion led planning staff to inquire about similar measures for the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Staff discussed the possibility with the Planning and Zoning Commission at the August 5th meeting, and there was significant interest, and at least changing the starting times and possibly switching to Tuesdays, like you guys have switched to. Currently, the code requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to meet on the first Monday of every month at 7:00 PM. The code language is unflinchingly rigid on that. The proposed amendment would dispatch of the specific time and date requirements and simply require one meeting per month. Staff plans to hold meetings on a regularly scheduled and consistent basis as often as we can. Additionally, this amendment would allow for scheduling of special meetings without a majority vote from the commission. The current code language requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to have a meeting in order to schedule a meeting, a special or emergency meeting, so it's kind of a meeting to schedule a meeting. This is more of a housekeeping measure. Cleans up some codified circular logic. So it would allow the planning director or any member of the commission to call for a special meeting should the need ever arise. So at the September 3rd Planning and Zoning Meeting, the commission voted unanimously on this amendment to recommend approval to Nixa City Council. These amendments would allow for pliability when scheduling Planning and Zoning meetings, and it would help to ensure a consistent quorum, as well as streamlining the scheduling of special meetings as they're needed, which is rarely, and staff recommends approval of this code amendment. And we're here if you have any questions.
I do have a question on that. It wasn't discussed the other night. We talked about moving it to a date and a time, and this doesn't indicate it, but does it? Are we still going to require that meeting to be held the first week of the month, at least?
Yeah, because we want to be ahead of the council meetings. There are some kind of calendar anomalies where it would be like the night before, we'd have a P&amp;Z meeting, and then council the next night. So we're trying to avoid those kinds of situations, too, since you guys switch to Tuesday meetings. So yeah, I think we won't be changing anything until probably January 1st, but we'll have a discussion and look at the calendar and figure out a schedule, so.
It wasn't written there about being the first week of the month, because current code says it's the first Monday of the month, so.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I said to meet on the first Monday at 7:00 PM specifically. Right, right, yeah.
The request is just letting you have flexibility, so it didn't require it being the first week.
Yeah, we should probably, I guess, put in there that it would be the first week still, yeah.
You're looking to be funny, Nick. Does that matter?
The way it's drafted, it's up to the commission to determine when they want to meet. So we can add language if you want a mandate that they meet within the first week of the month, but it's not reflected in the amendment before you this evening.
Because if they met the la, like if they were able to meet the last week of the month, that would still get everything done in time before the first council meeting of the next month. So I guess my ultimate question, I think it follows along with what Mr. Lucas is saying, is what's the ultimate goal? Is it to move it to the same Tuesday?
I think.
At 6:00 instead of doing Mondays?
They would like to start at 6:00, I think, at least. We've looked at different days. I think Tuesday sounded more popular, but it would depend kind of how the calendar falls still, usually.
It's a matter of what Tuesday and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. We'll have a discussion with what we lock into, I think, but.
I would think as long as it's somewhat uniform throughout the year and not make it to where you guys are scrounging to get people to the meeting.
Every month, it's a different day.
Confusing, yeah.
We'll try and stay consistent. We just, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, some consistency.
I thought so. Thank you.
And having it where it's in time for council meetings.
All right. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on planning and zoning meetings. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from Council about this? Fair enough. Moving on, Council Bill 2024-30.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2024-30. In ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, amending Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 2, Section 2-190 for the purpose of clarifying the city administrator's contract authority. Presenting is City Attorney Nick Woodman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. Currently, the city code has a section designated as Section 2-190, which contains provisions that authorize the city administrator to enter into contracts on behalf of the city where the amount of the contract is less than $5,000 without any other authorization from the City Council. This evening, city staff are proposing modifications. to pay more than $5,000 under a contract. Currently, the way the language is written, you could interpret it to apply in situations where the city's receiving funds that are in excess of $5,000. Our goal with this amendment is to clarify that it only applies when funds being expended by the city under that contract do not exceed $5,000. That's the change. It's kind of a cleanup item from when we adopted the purchasing code last year. This provision was included in that. The intent here was to, for those low-level liability contracts, to just be authorized by the city administrator without any kind of independent ordinance from the Council. I'm happy to answer any questions there are about that, but staff recommends approval.
Now, did this code come from the change in the charter a couple years ago? Because I thought something was done with the charter where it was-
The charter has default language, where in cases where Council doesn't designate somebody with the authority to execute a contract, there are default provisions, depending on what the contract is, on who can actually ink their signature on the document. It doesn't really grant any authority to actually bind the city to the contract without an authorization from Council. Does that make sense?
Yes.
They're kind of two different things.
Yep.
Who inks it is different than who has actual power to bind the city. In the absence of any kind of authority to do so, that power is held in the Council. This code section is an example of Council delegating that to one of its officials, which is the actual power to bind the city. The charter provisions you're referencing are just in the case that Council says, yeah, execute that contract, but don't designate an official to do so. Then the charter kind of picks it up and says, in some cases it's the mayor, and in some cases it's the administrator, depending on what the contract is.
Okay. Makes sense. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. All right, if there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion from Council? Moving on, Second Reading Council Bill 2024-27.
Second reading Council Bill Number 2024-27, in ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA, authorizing the city administrator to execute electric transmission contract amendments with Southwest Power Pool. Presenting is City Administrator Jimmy Lass.
All right. Mayor, Council, I'm going to do my best to fill in for Doug, although I'll come way short, I'm sure. So I'm going to kind of go over a little bit of what Doug talked about at the last meeting. But there in the last meeting, we seeked approval from Council, would authorize myself and the city administrator to execute two agreement amendments, and also a new agreement for electric transmission service with Southwest Power Pool, or SPP, for delivery of our wholesale power. The need for the two agreement amendments took place over the last several months, basically relates to two of our capacity contracts. The first reflects a current end date of, sorry, end date of an existing agreement for 30 megawatts of capacity from Dogwood Energy Center, and that one will not be renewed past the current May 2030 term date. The second one is actually an extension of the original term for 15 megawatts of capacity at the Grand River Dam Authority, for five years, basically from 2026 till June of 2031. Both of these actions caused the need to amend both SPP Network Integrated Transmission Service Agreement, and also the Network Operating Agreement, or NOA, between the SPP and the Southwest Power Administration, or SPA. You gotta love all the acronyms. Since then, since these have been amended, it was convenient to also correct some terminology, so both SPP and the SPA language matched that of the FERC-approved tariffs. So and then the third is a new agreement, is also an NOA, however, it's between NIXA, SPP, and the MEC, essentially the same as the first NOA agreement, as it must also comply with SPP's FERC-approved tariff. The main function, of course, is to assign operating responsibilities between SPP, SPA, and MEC for delivery of NIXA's wholesale power. I also want to make one more comment, that I know Doug mentioned last time there'd be a minor correction for the second read, and I think he addresses that later on in his memo, and it really deals with the word "network." That was inadvertently left out, the third, whereas in the SPP and SPA, NIXA and NOA agreement, amendment, it now reads specifically, whereas network customers' network load is physically located in the southwestern zone. So again, it really makes, this makes no changes to rates, responsibilities for NIXA, it's just kind of a cleanup, so. Be happy to attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, can you explain FERC, and how their approved tariff affects our transmission?
I will be happy to let Doug get back with you on that. I also have a couple guys in the back that could answer that.
Yeah. I sat through a six-hour seminar on FERC, and so I still don't know enough. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Lyles. Any questions? Fair enough. All right, if no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you'd like to speak on this. And I will close the public hearing. I will assume that there is no other discussion from Council. I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Ogden, and second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on, Resolution 2024-52.
Resolution Number 2024-52, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA, adopting a new investment policy. Presenting is Finance Director Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The resolution you have before you is to adopt a revamped investment policy. The policy that we have is very boilerplate, it came straight from the state treasurer's office, but we feel like a more robust and strategic policy will benefit the city. It establishes, the main goal is safety, liquidity, and yield. Those are the three mandates that we have to have in our policy, which we do. It also establishes an investment committee, made up of the city administrator, the assistant city administrator, the director of finance, and then an appointed member-at-large by the city administrator, just for oversight and collaboration in making investment decisions. And then it comes up with three different strategies for the different tiers of cash flow needs. Immediate, ongoing operational cash flow needs will be kept in our interest-bearing checking account, which we earn 80% of the 90-day T-bill rate right now, which is, we're earning over 4%, which is very good at the moment, but rates are due to fall at any point, so we're kind of at an interest rate risk to leave all of our money sitting there. The second tier is annual cash flow requirements, which we would look at, you know, capital needs or big purchases, and to determine the timing of when those investments can be liquidated. And the Missouri Securities Investment Program is a pool of government entities that pool their money together in investments, and they have a couple of different series that are liquid, meaning we can get our hands on that money within a day or two, if needed. So one series provides immediate liquidity within one to two days, and the other one offers terms from 60 days to one year, so the money is not locked up. And then the third tier is the long-term investing, and this would be invested in government-backed securities on a laddered approach, where you invest a certain amount for a certain amount of time, and when that matures and falls off, you reinvest it, and you keep that ladder going. And the advantage to doing that is so we can lock in some longer-term rates, probably, you know, around the 5% or maybe north of that. So in that situation, we would use a broker-dealer to guide us and to invest that, and to offer the rates that, you know, the brokers and dealers can come up with, and at the end of the policy, you'll see the broker-dealer questionnaire, that we would, in lieu of a sort of an RFP-type situation, because we would need this to be an ongoing thing, month over month, so we could compare rates, we will hand out this broker-dealer questionnaire and have a list of qualified broker-dealers to call upon, and so when something matures, I would call them up and say, what's the best rate you can give me, and this is what I need to invest, and keep that going month over month. And so I think this will help yield a little bit more money than what we have currently, and won't tie it up in a CD, which is traditionally what we've done with our investments. So staff recommends approval of this policy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And thank you for your forward thinking on this. Money is good. All right, if no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. And I will close the public hearing. Any other discussion from Council? Nothing else, I will accept a motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mr. Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. That was a quick one. And I'm sure there's like four different people that were going to say this tonight, but I get to go first. The 21st, Saturday, multicultural festival, 3 to 7 at McCully Park. You don't want to miss it. Food trucks, performances, and KY3's Chad Plin and myself will be having all sorts of fun with microphones, so. Still can't believe you guys trusted us with that, but here we are. So really looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a great time. Anything else from Council?
Do you want to remind those that might be listening, that utilities will be training on Friday, and so don't stop by. You're still welcome to do everything online and handle everything that way, so service will still be there, but they're just keeping one step ahead by doing a little additional training on Friday.
Perfect.
I also want to talk about, you're going to have to help me, Chris, with Johnny's last name.
Neil.
Neil?
Yeah.
John Neil is one of our apprentice linemen. He got second place in the MPUA rodeo-
Yay!
-in the apprentice division, so he should be very proud. We should be proud of him for working hard. That was a good event. I'm hoping our guys will be maybe more interested in competing next year, far as more of them, maybe get a journeyman team going, but that was a good event, I was very proud of him. I do have videos, I told him he's going to plan for everybody, but if you need to see it in person, I can show you, so. But he done a good job, so make sure you tell Johnny, good job.
Yay!
Anything else from staff? All right. Everybody's quiet today. All right, Mr. Peterson.
I move that City Council go into closed session under Section 610-021-3 and 13 of RSMO. I also move that this closed session, records related there, too, and any votes taken by the Council during the session shall be closed under Section 610-021 of RSMO, and that the City Council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, and second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Thank you all.